Is their choir director, music director, Mr. Brad Stauffer, correct? I said it correctly?
Perfect, thank you ma'am.
So I'd like to thank them personally for coming out and let's give them a warm welcome.[14.63][14.63][applause] And at this time, I'd like to turn over the production to you sir.
Thank you so much.
And we can't wait. We loved you so much, we wanted you to come back this year, so thanks a lot. Do you, would you rather them up here or anything?
I think we got it pitched, let's roll.
Go and roll, alright.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so very much for your attendance. Thank you so very much for your children. It's a wonderful season. We're thrilled to be here, we appreciate the invitation. And we have several non-traditional holiday selections that we're so happy to say thank you to the parent-teacher organization for having funded our music. And at the end, we'll have some great songs, some patriotic things that I hope you might join us and sing along with. Alright, do we have everybody's attention here, eyes here?
Yes.
Get your brains off.
Oh, I love it when I hear those jingles 'cause I know it's that time of year. It's a happy sound of light and merry sound that brings a smile and good cheer. Oh, they're so jingly, lovely and ringly, pleasant and tingly, jingle bells. Oh, they're so jingly, lovely and ringly, pleasant and tingly, jingle bells. Oh, I love it when I hear those jingles 'cause I know it's that time of year. It's a happy sound of light and merry sound that brings a smile and good cheer. Oh, they're so jingly, lovely and ringly, pleasant and tingly, jingle bells. Oh, they're so jingly, lovely and ringly, pleasant and tingly, jingle bells.
Our next selection is a piece that I know you all wish for. It's entitled "I'm Going to Be Nice Not Naughty."
I'm gonna be nice not naughty. I'm gonna be good this year. I'm gonna give lots and lots of cheer. I'm gonna be nice not naughty. I'm gonna be nice not naughty. I'm gonna be good this year. I'm gonna give lots and lots of cheer. I'm gonna be nice. Santa makes a list each year, I hear he checks it twice. With my handy double check, he'll see that I've been nice. N-I-C-E, nice. I'm gonna be nice not naughty. I'm gonna be nice not naughty. I'm gonna be good this year. I'm gonna give lots and lots of cheer. I'm gonna be nice. I'm gonna be nice not naughty. I'm gonna be good this year. I'm gonna give lots and lots of cheer. I'm gonna be nice. I'm gonna be nice. I'm gonna be nice, nice not naughty but nice. I'm gonna be nice. Nice.
Chief, would you help us out? We need, we have our group of manly men over here. But what I point, could you say in your chieflyest chief voice, better bundle up, bundle up? Help, help, help the voice, I'll point, it'll be easy for you. By the way, the song's entitled, Better Bundle Up. Our girly girls are first.
The snow is falling and it's getting cold. Better bundle up, bundle up. The frost is nipping at the end of my nose. Better bundle up, bundle up. The wind is blowing and it's getting wet. Better bundle up, bundle up. Time to bundle up, time to save. Better bundle up, bundle up. Better bundle up, better bundle up, better bundle up, bundle up. Better bundle up, better bundle up, better bundle up, bundle up, up, up. Up, up, up. Well, the ice is forming on the windowpane. Better bundle up, bundle up. I'm wearing woolies and I cannot complain. Better bundle up, bundle up. The wind is chugging from head to toe. Better bundle up, bundle up. I am ready, so let it snow. Better bundle up, bundle up. Better bundle up, better bundle up, better bundle up, bundle up. Better bundle up, better bundle up, better bundle up, better bundle up. Better bundle, better bundle up, better bundle up, better bundle up. Better bundle, better bundle, better bundle up. Better bundle up, better bundle up, bundle up, up, up.[577.12][577.12][applause]
Our, our next selection is going to take us on a little tour from our classroom, out of the building. And I'm just certain that you will be able to figure out the title of this selection very quickly.
Oh where? Not in the classroom. No pinata, not in the hall. No pinata, not in the office. No pinata, not on the wall. No pinata, where in the world can it be? It should be easy to see. It's making colorful and loaded with treats. We want to knock it down and grab all the sweets. No, no, no. No pinata, no, no, no. No pinata, no, no, no. No pinata, no, no, no. No pinata. Where, oh where can it be? Oh where? Not in the buildings. No pinata, not on the streets. No pinata, not on the sidewalk. No pinata, not in the trees. No pinata, where in the world can it be? It should be easy to see. It's making colorful and loaded with treats. We want to knock it down and grab all the sweets. No, no, no. No pinata, no, no, no. No pinata, no, no, no. No pinata, no, no, no.
I guess the reason that I mentioned they're non-traditional is there are so many private music publishers today that come up with songs for every season, for every reason. And it's all about the educational value of the song, the repetition, and how they learn how to sing the songs. And the value based on their singing skills. So, we, we picked, again, the parent-teacher organization was so kind to provide some of this material. And it did not take long to be obvious that the children really enjoyed these particular selections. And so, we were rolling with it a little bit before Thanksgiving, and then we got our wonderful phone call and invitation. So it just seemed like, let's go ahead and go with it. Our last holiday selection is called "This Magic Season."
This magic season is all around us, filling up the air, filling up the air, oh. This magic season is all around us, spreading everywhere, fill it everywhere you are, you This magic season, if you're inside us, feel it in your heart, feel it in your heart, oh. This magic season, it will inspire us, let the magic start, let the magic start right now, right now, right now. Bring up that light, the lights make it merry and bright. Let us raise up our voices, raise up our voices. Feel the glow from the hearts that you know, and the whole world rejoices, whole world rejoices. This magic season is all around us, spreading up the air, filling up the air, oh. This magic season is all around us, spreading everywhere, fill it everywhere you are, you are. This magic season, if you're inside us, feel it in your heart, feel it in your heart, oh. This magic season, it will inspire us, let the magic start, let the magic start right now, right now, right now. Bring up that light, the lights make it merry and bright. Let us raise up our voices, raise up our voices. Feel the glow from the hearts that you know, and the whole world rejoices, whole world rejoices. La, 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 la. Raise up our voices, raise up our voices. La, 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 la. And the whole world rejoices, whole world rejoices. This magic season is here inside us, fill it in your heart. This magic season, it will inspire us, let the magic start, right now, right now.
By the way, I'd like to thank the powers that be for this year providing us with a new moon box. And I guess last year, there were some interesting moments. And we have a nice new one that's helping us out this year again. Thank you so very much. Thanks so much to Ms. Scott over at Harahan Elementary. Again, all of our thanks to you for your children, your support. Give yourselves a big round of applause.[1132.33][1132.33][applause] That would be the council, everyone for your support, we appreciate it. Please give your children a round of applause.[1146.65][1146.65][applause] Let's see, please if you hope, after you. Please join us in a few patriotic selections here. We have "She's a Grand Old Flag," and we have "This Land is Your Land," and a little bit of "America." We figured since the children are here with government in action, let's bring the patriotic on.
You're a grand old flag, you're a high-flying flag, and forever and peace make it wave. We're the end of love, the land I love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heartbeat true for the red, white, and blue, where there's never a post or frame. Let's blow those winds and speed forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag. This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to New York Island, and where my forest, to the ocean waters. This land was made for you and me. I was walking through the highway, I saw a love me, and at the highway, I saw the low beat, the golden valley. This land was made for you and me. America, America, God shed his grace on me. And crown thy wood with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. And crown thy wood with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.[1314.12][1314.12][applause]
The regular city council meeting for December 15th, 2016 is called to order at 7:35 PM. Madam clerk, the pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is in its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Councilman Baudier?
Present.
Councilman Benton?
Present.
Councilman Hewitt?
Councilman Baudier said...
She's either gonna be late or not make it.
Okay. Councilman Johnston?
Present.
Councilman Wheeler?
Present.
Mayor Vesely?
Present.
Police Chief Walker?
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer?
Is absent.
City Attorney Barris?
Present.
City CPA Linda Lulu?
Present.
And municipal clerk Nicole Lee is present.
I'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize the passing of a former city councilman, Councilman Donilon. Can, can you hear me now?
I'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize the passing of Councilman Donilon, who passed on December 8th, I believe. He gave a lot of time to our city, he cared about it, and we should remember him, so I'd like to just take a moment, please.
On behalf of the city, we'd like to extend to his family and friends and to our community our condolences for his loss. Also, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Harahan Elementary 3rd graders who just performed this year and did some Christmas caroling. It was absolutely wonderful. We're gonna try and create a little tradition here and bring in the spirit of the season every year with some caroling, bring some joy. I've placed some poncetas on the council as a token of appreciation and a gift to the council to take home and hopefully enjoy and add to your home decorations. I'd like to, before we start, address an issue that we've gotten some phone calls on between some of the hot topics out in the community. I'd like to address this one in particular and move through the events that have surrounded everyone's water bills and the sewer rate bills, the sewer charges. Our sewer system, like many across the country, is in great disrepair. Our residents have had sewage back up into their homes and on the streets where they live. During a gentle rain, many citizens couldn't even flush their commodes. The sewer system must be cared for properly to protect for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. In 2013, the city council granted then-Mayor Mosca permission to take out a $4 million loan to pay for the necessary improvements that are mandated. The past administration promised to pay the loan back by pledging to raise our sewer They started spending the money from the loan but never increased the rates as promised to pay back the loan. They also did not initiate the proper accounting required for the loan. After this administration's thorough assessment of our sewer system, it was glaringly obvious that the loan was critical in order to repair the system and protect the residents. We have implemented the proper accounting required for the loan, and this council voted unanimously to raise the sewer rates that prevented the DEQ loan, I mean, that prevented that loan from being, going into default. This council also prevented the city from having to pay back the loan if we defaulted it and prevented it from bankruptcy. They were charged with a heavy burden, and they stepped up, and they did what they had to do after numerous meetings, talking to the DEQ, three professionals, including the bond attorney for the DEQ from Adams and Reese, to our city attorney, our city finance administrator, to our bond attorney. And it was taken very seriously, and I saw the struggles we all had trying to ensure that those rates would stay as low as possible. Had we not passed the sewer rates minimally, the DEQ would have come in and appointed an engineer who would have determined the sewer rates for us. And knowing engineers as I do, I think they would have identified many more issues that they may have even made the rates higher. They could have then taken over control of the finances of the sewer fund itself. We could have gone into conservatorship and then ended in bankruptcy. If they would have called the loan, they would have asked for full payment, which Harahan would not have been able to do. So I'd like to commend the council for doing the hard work that was left over from many years prior. Because the rate increase was not initiated in 2013, and it's a 20-year loan, that meant we lost some time to implement the sewer rates. So a loan, instead of having 20 years to pay it back, got shortened, kinda like a mortgage or when you take out a lease, when you're buying a car. So if you bought a car for five years and you started paying it on year three, those payments are gonna be steeper for the life of the loan. The rate increase is burdensome. But due to the efforts of this administration, our financial administrator, and this council, we are able to keep the rates lower than our neighboring cities and parishes. The city... The city, this administration, pledges to continue to evaluate the sewer system and adjust the rates if financial circumstances allow. I will be announcing a date soon to have a City Hall, City-Town meeting in early 2017, likely in January, so that we can have an open forum, a discussion, to talk about the sewer and these rates more in depth. We don't have the time here tonight to go through it completely, and I think the citizens deserve that opportunity. And thank you for your patience on letting me explain that. Address the council?
Special presentations.
What? Oh, presentations, I skipped presentations. I'm so sorry. We have special presentations. Thank you for keeping track, Councilman Johnston. Darlene Schwartz?
Good evening, everyone. Real briefly tonight, just a reminder for the Harahan Christmas Parade this coming Saturday. Word of mouth's gonna have to do it as this won't air until after the parade is over with. 12 o'clock noon start time. Weather's supposed to be terrific, so come on out and enjoy the festivities there. The mayor's advisory youth council thing is still a work in progress. Give me an email if you're interested. Live in Harahan, teenagers in school, 14 to 19 years of age. or just call me at City Hall. That's probably easier. Ms. Katie Peppo is assisting on that, and she's gonna be a leader in that, and appreciate hearing from you. And if anyone knows of anyone that's really in need for Christmas, Thanksgiving, that's over with, but Christmas meal or something, give me a shout at City Hall. I'm trying to put together a little bit of a list. The mayor asked me to work on that. And maybe we can help someone in need that times are tough with a lot of people. Give me a shout. We'd like to maybe put a little something together and hand-deliver it to the House. In the meantime, Merry Christmas to everybody here, and best wishes for a good 2017 and to everybody, the citizens and everything. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Chief Walker?
Mayor, council, the public? I have several questions.
Chief, can we get to the microphone?
First one I'll start with is about the Pump to the River project. Kinda give you a little update on what's been going on with that. For your information... It's on. There's five different contractors on that project. And when it started by the playground where the intake pipes going in, they had to disconnect a sewer line that went to two outbuildings on the playground. One of them's a concession stand, other one's a shelter. As a result of that, they sending a sewer line straight up to the fire station. And on November 23rd, a Wednesday, I got an email from the program manager for the Sealer Project saying that they want to close 1100 block of Hickory from November 28th through December 19th to put the sewer line down across Hickory. They said the Department of Transportation and the parish approved it. Well, I called my contact at the Department of Transportation. I had some major concerns that they want to close down Hickory Avenue through the week before Christmas, that it was unacceptable. As a result of that, we had a meeting the following week on a Monday. And with that, we met with the foreman for Fleming Construction Company, who was a contractor that's putting this line down. It was an eight-inch sewer line, 10 feet in the ground. And I spoke with him, and I said, "How can we do this?" And he said, "Give me to December the 8th, and I'll have it complete for you, chief." Well, every day I went by there from that Tuesday, that Friday, he had it finished. And with that, I'd like to make a presentation to him. Mayor? Tim Call, come on, Tim. This guy... This gentleman's a foreman for Fleming Construction Company. And I'm telling you, him and his crew worked extremely diligent in putting that line down in like four and a half days. That Saturday morning, we were opening the road up and ready to roll. And deepest gratitude to you and your man. You all really worked hard, and you deserve that. And your crew, tell them, thank you.
It meant a lot to the citizens.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way we're gonna be closed down through December 19th. All right, next. Mayor Mazzelli, on November 18th, you made an interview with Fox 8 Law, and it appeared in an article that you stated the ordinance regarding... This is regarding the speed cameras, folks. And every time it came up, it wasn't my idea. I didn't present it, the council did. I've always said I wasn't opposed to it. It's the council's choice whether they wanna put it into play or not. When Mayor Mazzelli made a statement, the ordinance was accursed by Harahan Police Chief Tim Walker. Mayor Mazzelli further stated extensive conversations with former members of Harahan law enforcement and a thorough review of the HPD or Harahan Police Department history of traffic control. "It is apparent to me, Mayor, that Harahan does not need traffic cameras if the chief of police deploys his officers in a manner consistent with past administrations." Well, as I mentioned before, I'm the elected police chief. We are short several officers. We have one out that's been injured off duty. And I think we run this department very, very efficient. Let me give you a little example of what happened. When I came in in May of '14, the previous chief had resigned in the latter part of 2013. When I came in in May of '14, I came into a department that morale was at rock bottom. We are a service organization. Our people, our officers, go out and they serve you to the best that they can. I have tried to relieve every pressure off of them. They have got two orders from me. Your safety's number one, paramount. Second, you enforce all the laws equally to everybody. You stop one of my family members, do what you have to do, write him a ticket. It doesn't matter. So they can go out there and do their job. There's been a war in police. There's 137 law enforcement officers that have been murdered this year throughout the country. 137, doing their job, protecting us throughout the community. So if you can say something about me, Mayor, please tell the truth. I don't appreciate, you know, you saying something that's not correct. I didn't say I was a spearhead or I requested that the speed cameras come into Harahan. All right, next. There was an incident a few weeks ago, Sunday morn...
I'd like to just address that.
Well, you can answer it if you want, I'm finished, okay? Sunday a week ago, about 8:15 in the morning, Academy Sports back in Elmwood. Three gentlemen went over there. One stayed in the pickup truck. Two went inside the store to shoplift ammunition. There was an off-duty Jefferson Parish deputy in there, gave chase. One of them got caught in a general vicinity. The other one got in the pickup truck, and they took off headed towards Harahan. They came into Harahan when they made the S curve. They lost control of the pickup truck. And before they hit Geeks, One More Shop, they bailed out. We had two Harahan police officers right there when this happened, and a JP was right behind them. Didn't know the time, but thought these guys were armed. They ran across the street. One of them pulled a weapon on our guys. Thank God, there was no gunshots and nobody fired. No gunshots, nobody was hurt. They were later captured that morning on Chris Law. I'm gonna show you, I'll make a presentation. This is not weapons. These are clips or magazines that hold bullets to give you, and I hear what we're up against. There were two other guns in the truck. One of them had a magazine equipped that holds 33 rounds. The second pistol, he had one holds 50 rounds. Our weapons, which despite one of our customers said we shouldn't have purchased, holds 17 rounds. We're lucky they didn't get out with those two guns. I think everything happened so quick when they lost control when the accident happened. If it had these other weapons, it could have been a different story. We could have had some hurt police officers. As I've said once, I've said a thousand times, their safety is utmost. I'm gonna spend every penny I can to keep them. If I can't give them a raise, and I lose people because they don't get paid, they'll be the best equipped. We got vehicles that go back to 2006, you know... We got five of them that go to 2006, one 2008. They average 120,000 miles. And it wouldn't be for, I said before, Councilman Paul Johnson, who bought the last eight marked police units for the city, we wouldn't have any marked police units. I've been asking for, we had a... The city had an auction recently, and some of our equipment was sold. And I'd asked where that money's at, and I still can't get a response. It's just a bunch of things that have been going on that I'm not happy with. It seems like the mayor, when somebody doesn't agree with you, they become your enemy, and you start trying to discredit them. And it's happened too many times. I'm not standing for it. What happened this past week, I went over to court to check a court record. I met with the court director, court clerk. You can't come in. Mayor says we can't talk to the police. I said, "What?" I said, "Go talk to the mayor and see what's up." Came back and said, "Is it official police business?" Said, "Yes, I'm gonna check some court records. Okay, you can come in." This foolishness has to stop. We have to work together. I mean, my Christmas wish is that we all can work together and move forward in this city. Thank you.
I don't wanna get this into a he said, she said, and I don't wanna add any length, additional undue length or stress to this situation. There are some simple misstatements. Ms. Hewitt was on this dais and talked to the chief at an open meeting. I believe it was the October meeting. I'll have to go check. And anyone can go and look on YouTube for those meetings, and I'll get back to you where it was, where she said to the chief something along the hotline of "Thank you for helping me spearhead," or "You're spearing had this with me." Yes, chief, and there was acknowledgement. I did not lie. We might disagree on the interpretation, but I did not lie. I've never accused you of lying. I told my staff that I like to be present for interdepartmental meetings. We've had several incidents recently where there have been some major misunderstandings. So as the mayor, when it's an interdepartmental meeting, I requested to be there or send a designee. I don't think that's too much to ask. I present the budget by law. At a meeting several months back, I was not allowed to attend a meeting with the police because my presence wasn't welcome. And it was unfortunate. And they proceeded to have the meeting, and I'm the one responsible for putting it forth for the people. So all I asked my staff is that if there's a meeting to involve me. And I think that's what I owe our citizens and our residents and all our constituents. We have some very important issues. I, like the chief, we walked into a deficit that was crippling the city. A deficit of $1.25 million. The prior administration had inherited a million-dollar surplus. So within the span of four years, the budget was overspent by 2.25 million, two and a quarter million. Budgets weren't passed, much less budget amendments attempted. We've righted the ship. It's been difficult. We're, the chief and I, the police chief, the fire chief, all the departments, we have services our citizens deserve. We have officers that when we send them out, we want them to be safe, have what they need. We have a sewer system that was on collapse with patients, with people. Some of them are patients of hospice, in-home hospice, with commodes that would back up on them. It would be wonderful if I could say that our budget, our income, has increased, and everybody can get what they deserve. It would be nothing better. I'd be the hero in the city, right? If we didn't have to raise, increase sewer rates. If I could look like the good guy to the police chief, the fire department, and everyone. So it's been a challenge. And we've all had to work harder, do more with less. So within the first year, we put $1 million toward that deficit. This year, we've put $275,000 toward the deficit. If the budget and the amendments pass, we will be in the black for 2017. When I took office, the chief came to me, and he had some very dire circumstances to which I agreed. He wanted to do 12-hour shifts. He wanted to be able to pay his officers for the extra four hours. We worked on it, we did it. He also had officers who didn't even get holiday time. They had to take comp time. We worked on it, and we did it. The chief came to me when I took office and said, "The guys can't put their families on the health insurance because it's too expensive." He said, "We need something more affordable." We worked on it, and we provided it. We did that at the same time of putting $1 million toward the deficit. This year, he was patient because he has decreased staff and so does every other department in the city. This year, moving forward, I looked at staffing. Nowhere else did we increase staffing. But we eked out money and said we can afford an additional firefighter, an additional police officer. I wanted to know exactly what the history was on how many police officers. It's a little difficult to figure out some staffing things. So over the Thanksgiving weekend, I spent about five days. I pulled all the old records and went through, week by week, month by month, over the last eight years. The maximum number of police officers that the city has had in that time was 19.09 full-time officers. In the budget that I'm presenting and offering for next year, it gets the chief to 19. I believe in when he says he needs more personnel. I believe my maintenance department. I believe my fire department. I believe everyone, because I see it day to day. We didn't get in the hole overnight, and we're not gonna get out of it overnight. But I am proud of the hard work we've put in so that we can provide first responders to our community. I've had many talks with the chief. I feel his frustration myself. That being said, I hope everyone knows that I know that I'm not going to be able to make everyone happy when it comes to the budget. But we're getting there, day by day, month by month, and year by year. And I can tell you, I can look every single resident, homeowner, business owner, in the eye that I have worked our tails off, and we have been honest up front and done the best job we can in order to get us fiscally stable and provide the services you need. I will meet with anyone and go over anything. Give me a new solution, give me new options. We'll listen. My door's always open. I just want it open for me as well to meetings that are important for the city. I just want it open for me as well to meetings that are important for the city.
We will now go to address the council.
First of all, the seven elected officials in this Harahan, the five councilmen, the mayor and the chief, we're all independent of each other. The council doesn't report to me, I don't report to them, the mayor doesn't report to them, they don't report to me. I'm not a department head, I don't report to the mayor. So, by the Larson Act, it's a state law that small cities, villages, and towns that don't have a home charter, that they walk, they work out of. Elected police chief, he sets his, he presents his own budget, he's responsible for his or her own budget. The next thing about the meeting when I met with Ms. Lulu and my staff, if I'm paying $105 an hour for a professional, I don't need the mayor there talking and interrupting and my clock goes up, where I'm paying more out of my budget to meet with her, to get history information that I need to make my proposed budget. That's why I asked the mayor not to attend. I presented the budget for the police department. By law, I'm required to, not the mayor. Thank you.
I respectfully request that you present the law that you're quoting about presenting in order to do the budget. We will now move to address the council. Anyone who would like to come up to address the council, please come up, state your name and address. You have three minutes. Come to the left and we will move through. Thank you.
Brian Whittle.
Hold on, if you don't mind, just give me a second and I'll pull up our little... He doesn't want to cooperate. Okay.
I'll be brief. My Christmas wish is everybody that's on social media, get their facts straight before they put anything on it. Is it on? It's working? All right. My Christmas wish is anybody puts anything on social media to get their facts straight. The weapons that were purchased for the police officers, I'm a reserve police officer, not a lot of people know that, do it at night when most of y'all are sleeping. I have a full-time job. The reserves have a full-time job, they do what they can, they come out when they can. They have a family to take care of. But anyway, the weapons were bought. He just showed you those magazines. We're out, we get in a shootout, Jefferson Parish guns, God forbid one of them get hurt, we can get to them and get their clip, their magazine, whatever you want to call it, and we can continue in the firefight. So that was a necessary cost. And one more question, and maybe it's not pertaining. The budget, it's a line item budget, correct? So the chief has not given $100,000, spend it as you will. Be real brief. Line item budget, you got a line item and you got X amount of dollars allocated for this line item, and you go over, where does that money come over, come from to take care of that line item? I was just wondering if any one of y'all could possibly answer that for me.
Address the, anybody else would like to come up and address the council? And I think, Mr. Whittle, I apologize, it's a new phone and I didn't set, wait, I didn't set the amount of minutes correctly, so, sorry.
Jason Bruzek, 7204 Stoneley. Can you guys hear me okay?
No.
Ah, jeez. Is this a little better?
Yeah.
All right, okay. I was very glad to hear the story about the sewage, by the way, because that told me something about Harahan. Remember, I've only been here for a couple of years and so I encounter a problem on Riverside Drive with speeding. Everybody knows that, I've been talking about it now for months. Harahan came together to fix a problem for a small group of folks. You didn't just kick them to the curb and forget about them and say, "Oh, you guys pay for that, you fix it." Because there's no way for them to fix it. I'm in the same boat and I'm asking you, for what solution can you propose? Something. I would like you guys to please, after I sit down, answer what you propose to fix the problem on Riverside Drive. Tell me a solution, because the solution that was already proposed has been vetoed. Fair. You have that power, mayor. But, I don't know, has anybody ever been in a car accident before where you get broadsided? It's terrible, terrible. It catches you completely out of, well, I'd say left side, in my case, completely out of left side. It spins you around, it is absolutely debilitating, scares just the life out of you, and you are seriously injured. And that's what we face on Riverside Drive every single time we back out of a driveway. I actually stopped, Tim, thank you, you had police on Riverside Drive, right by my house the other day. I was pulling out, I pulled over and said, "Thank you very much," because the guy came around the corner, he was speeding. And you know what? I think he got a ticket too, as a matter of fact, because the cop, he waved at me, went up and around, and went and got him. The guy slowed down because he saw the cop. He did. If that cop hadn't been there, I could have been hit and I think I would have been. And you know what? That happens too often, way too often, especially right at the turns. There's two big turns, guys, and I live, happen to live at one of them, and I got two small kids. Have any of you guys ever been in a car wreck? I'm asking for a solution. We elect you to fix these problems, not to just kick them to the curb. And that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for a solution. I was also noticed, at the last meeting, you guys voted to pretty much guarantee yourselves another lawsuit. So your fear of lawsuits, you voted for one last time. So I don't believe that there is a fear of lawsuits. I hope it's not just politics. And I'm asking that you rise above politics on this particular issue, because I got little kids. I just had to buy my wife a minivan. I'm sorry. I'll motion for another minute. I'll be very brief. So I'm just asking if you would, if you would please...
My phone is, hold on, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's just wanting to just... Sorry, I have a motion for another minute by Councilman Johnston.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes. You have an additional minute.
Thank you. I just got my wife a minivan because I got small kids. I'm asking you, don't kick the folks on Riverside Drive to the curb. You didn't do it for the sewage, the sewage folks. You certainly voted to uphold what looks like going to be a lawsuit with Woods Materials last time. Show the same courage, do something, and tell me and everybody else here what your solution is, whatever it may be. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, three or four of us came to speak just on the traffic camera ordinance. Would it be better...
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Richard Brown from, would it be better if we wait until you take that ordinance up?
Yes, sir.
I think we would prefer to.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So John Ream, three run pass. Addressing the wood materials again, and I know y'all getting tired of hearing this, but we have some data, but my wife has some real good data. But Sarah Woodham, one of the owners of Wood Materials, stated in New Orleans City Business, November 11th, she said it should take about six weeks to complete a new hall road, which began construction in July. We sent emails to the Corps of Engineers concerning delays on Wood Materials' hall road move. On October 14th, well after the July start, which had never happened, we received email back to us from Martin Mayor of the Corps of Engineers. The email confirmed that although the Corps has received the subject permit, application from Wood Resources, sufficient information to deem the application complete and initiate the review process has not been provided by the applicant as of this date. No, that's not three minutes. October 14th, a little bit later, about an hour or two later, we received another email from Michael Farby from the Corps of Engineers to follow up that the current information just came in and was provided for and they would proceed. December 2nd, which is almost two months later, we received the email from Albert Terry of the Corps. I can't speak on behalf of Wood Materials and their consultant as to when the information will be submitted. Still lacking something. When the request, when the requested information is submitted, we will review the material expeditiously. The Corps is waiting on Wood Materials to supply needed info on permit to move the hall road. When will Wood Materials give all the information needed to the Corps to get the hall road moved? That Sarah stated, construction of hall road began, would begin in July. We see delay after delay of Wood Materials moving the hall road. Wood Materials should be required to move to, by the Corps, to move the hall road. Any hall roads constructed on the bachelor parallel to the levee ought to be located no closer than 50 feet from the Riverside levee toe. All or most of the width of the east-west hall road adjacent to the levee is within 50 feet of the levee toe. Requiredment set out in the letter by Harry School from the Corps of Engineers dated September 23rd, 1992, and Albert Gillett from the Corps, June 17th, 1998. We request that Wood Materials to move the hall road to the Riverside of the sand pits on December 8th, 2015, over a year ago, to reduce the amount of sand blowing over the levee. Wood Materials has told DEQ it planned on moving the hall road. DEQ has Wood Materials under a compliance order with potential penalties. Can you have one, just a short?
Motion for one more minute.
I have a motion for one more minute by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Thank you. The, please call DEQ, because they have a 24-hour day hotline at 225-219-3640 to report any airborne sand to the DEQ. The DEQ has been very helpful in addressing the complaints from the residents. Thank you for your calls to report sand issues. You can call every time you see airborne sand. You can also report in later than you see the sand and state the time. You can also call if you, to report odors. So, Wood Materials attorney is here and Remy Donnelly, and maybe he can address the issue about moving the road, because it looks like it's delay after delay on this hall road moving. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ream.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Evelyn Ream, three run pass. We attended the Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority East, East Jefferson Levy District meeting today. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. No, I'll speak a little louder. We spoke to East Jefferson Levy District non-commissioners concerning Wood Materials' 2017 operating permit renewal for January 1st, 2017. Wood Materials is operating a mulching and composting facility behind the levee on the bachelor in the city of Harahan. Wood Materials 2016 operating permit application to East Jefferson Levy District partly states company description of activity on application to be permitted on Harahan Sand Bachelor is organic soil composting, blending and composting organic soil on site brought in by trucks and limestone is delivered by barge and stockpiled. But Wood Materials manufacturing activity on the Harahan Bachelor consists of mulching and composting, bringing in tree dumping, animal waste and coffee waste, blending and bagging for pickup. This activity is prohibited in Harahan on the sand bachelor and are not permitted uses on the NU Bachelor District. Wood Materials is asking East Jefferson Levy District to give the company a permit to operate prohibited activity in Harahan, according to Harahan Ordinance 1333, NU Bachelor states no manufacturing. Mulching and composting is unhealthy for the residents of Harahan and people using the Mississippi River Trail on the levee for exercise and leisure. East Jefferson Levy District operating permit renewal for Wood Materials, line 14 states, you must get approval from the city in which you operate. We had a copy of this letter from the mayor. This is a copy from the mayor that she sent to us yesterday. I would like to explain. The mayor had this, copy of this letter from, we had a copy of this letter from Mayor Tina Maselli, which states, "The city requests that the East Jefferson Levy District deny Wood Materials LLC from conducting any and all compost activity within the city of Harahan and immediately revoke Wood Materials' operating permit for limestone stockpiling upon completion of the construction of the Harahan Pump to the River drainage project, drainage project, which is expected to occur in the end of the first quarter of 2017." We would like to express thank you to Mayor Tina Maselli for writing a letter to Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority, East Jefferson Levy District, in giving us a copy to bring to, with us to the meeting today. We spoke at the meeting and we submitted copies to all non-commissioners. We will be emailing everyone tomorrow on our email list, a copy of Mayor Tina Maselli's letter that also included ordinance number 1818 on hours of operation on Sand Bachelor in Harahan that council voted for. Check your emails tomorrow for your copies. Mayor Tina Maselli also sent letters to the Corps, Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority, Louisiana Department of Agriculture and Forestry. Mayor Tina Maselli, again, thank you for addressing the mulching and composting and all activity connected to it. Just about 30 more seconds, please.
Can I have a motion for another minute?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor. Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays.
I'm sorry, I'm a little lost, I just read that paragraph over. Mayor Tina Maselli also sent letters to the Corps, Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority, Louisiana Department of Agriculture and Forestry. Mayor Tina Maselli, again, thank you for addressing the mulching and composting and all activity connected to it. Thank you for attaching section XV, NU Bachelor District Ordinance 1333. Also, thank you for signing and attaching ordinance 1818 amendment to ordinance 1333 addressing hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to your letter. We'd also like to thank Councilman Craig Johnston for introducing ordinance 1818 amendment to ordinance 1333, section XV of Apex A, hours of operation. Any business operating, utilizing equipment of dump trucks, front-end loaders, cranes, and excavators shall be restricted to operations between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. We would like to thank Councilman Dana Hewitt, Councilman Craig Johnston, Councilman Tina Baudier, and Councilman Kerry Wheeler for voting for ordinance number 1818 hours of operation on Bachelor. We understand Councilwoman Sue Benton was not able to vote on reason she stated at the last council meeting. I have one more little bitty paragraph, thank you.
Go on.
I'm so glad I have a lot of thanks to give in this because this is unusual, so bear with me, I just have a teeny bit left.
Just read, so while we...
Okay.
We got a paragraph, go.
It's just tiny. "We would like to thank the four regulatory members who voted for restricting hours of operation on the Bachelor, on Harahan Bachelor, November 10th, 2016, Brian Whitley, Patrick Peppo, Dwayne Marco, and Dale Valensi. Most of all, we would like to thank Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, for His wisdom and strength to continue. We thank God so much for blessing the residents of Harahan who have suffered greatly with their loss of quality of life due to the activities of Wood Materials Company." Thank you. I just want to say real quick, this is the application where there's a description that they describe and what they're doing along with the other activity. And this is the East...
Evelyn.
One more, just the 2016 East Jefferson Levy operating permit application, line 14 says approval from the parish and city which you're operating. So thank you for addressing it, so, thank you.
I'm Ralph Herman, I live on Huntley Lane. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell the chief that, look, we support you in every way. We support our guys. Harahan is a small town and we have a high opinion of our police officers here. With that being said, I would ask that you try and get a better relationship with the mayor, because this is very snippy. And I don't know what the problem is, mayor, but somehow y'all have to fix this. You all are elected by us to represent us, each and every one of us to the best you can. I would also like to say, if you need ammunition or guns for your guys, we all for that. But you have 17 round clips, if you carry two, that's a tremendous amount of firepower.
It wasn't my point, my point was, when you're against somebody with a 33-round clip or 50-round clip, yes, you can change, but under fire, it's not that easy. Somebody's sitting there pulling the trigger 50 times...
I understand. The gun is hot.
You got 17, try to reload, it's a whole different situation.
I understand, but that's training. I would also like to say, in my three minutes, please, figure out how to get rid of these cameras, bad idea. We need another police officer, I'm 100% for that. If we need to pass a little mileage to get that, I would support that. But I don't think we need cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ream.
Michael Maxwell, 8209, Huntley Lane. Mayor, council members. I'm also against the traffic cameras. Jefferson Parish is full of empty cans on the side of the road that don't do anything. Now, this gentleman over here, he just mentioned... Now, this gentleman over here, he just mentioned that he's worried we're getting T-boned, and when they saw the police, they slowed down. Well, a traffic camera's not going to slow him down, but it will give him a ticket. But is it after he gets hit, after he gets sideswiped, after he gets T-boned, after his family's at risk? No, we need, we need more, more police presence in that area, if that's the area that is in question. Thank you very much for your time. Merry Christmas to everybody.
My name is May Jean Casney, forty-six Oak Avenue, Harahan, Louisiana. I'm reading this note from this Rhonda Bagley. "Two weeks ago, a couple was out celebrating their fiftieth wedding anniversary at a restaurant. The lady collapsed and became unresponsive. But they were lucky, because the mayor and her husband were also celebrating at the same restaurant. Dr. Maselli and the mayor went into a, a action during CPR and mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. They managed to save her life. We are lucky, too, to have her as a mayor with Dr. Maselli close at hand. This deserves a round of applause."
Tommy Buddy seventy-two zero eight, Stone Lee Drive. The last gentleman who spoke made it sound like speed cameras wouldn't affect the psychology of speeders. What affects their psychology is when they get a ticket. They're not going to respect the law. The only thing that's going to change their mind is a ticket. Speed cameras are the most efficient way to change that psychology. Now, if somebody's opposed to it, I'm fine with that. They've reached their own conclusions. But when you state these mistruths as fact, it's disinformation. And I for one won't let it stand. The Jefferson Parish Traffic Department did a almost four-day study, a little shy of four days, with instruments that measured the speed of vehicles. In, in less than a four-day period, we had three vehicles that were recorded at speeds between seventy and two-hundred miles per hour. Now, they weren't going two-hundred miles an hour, but they were probably doing more than seventy miles an hour. I back out in a curve. If somebody's doing seventy-five mi, seventy, just say seventy, they're not going to see me in time to stop. I was T-boned in a big old nineteen seventy-eight Impala. Fortunately, they hit me on the right side doing forty-five miles an hour, squared off, pushed the car in three feet. My wife had been with me, she wouldn't be alive today. This is an accident waiting to happen. So, for people to take it lightly. And, and if you really believe that if you ticket these people that for the most part are using this as a bypass doing in excess of seventy miles an hour, if they don't, if they get a ticket and you don't think that that will change their psychology about speeding on river road, you're kidding yourself. Of course it will. That's what's going to affect these people that have no respect for the law or the safety of the people in Harahan. So, of course, I'm in support of the vetoing of the mayor's, overriding the mayor's veto of the ordinance, and I'll be speaking again later.
Hello, I'm Ashley Wyndham, and I live at eighty-two oh five Ferrero Drive. Me and my fiance purchased that property in August. And I did, I was in contact with the mayor, Mayor Maselli, earlier when I heard about the speed cameras. We would have not purchased that house if we would have thought this was a community that was going to put speed cameras up. We would have gone to New Orleans. I mean, come on. So, I was very upset about it. We sent emails, we signed petitions. Now, instead of being at home doing what we normally do, we have to come over here and sit at this stupid meeting, because we do not want speed cameras. Now, I can't, I can't stop the federal government from spying on me and doing Big Brother stuff. I can't even stop the state government. But I am going to stop the cameras from recording us when we may not even be doing anything wrong. Now, I am very upset about this issue. I'm sorry, you have children? Why don't you just keep them out of the street? I try to go slowly to not hit any children and not hit any animals. I'm sure most people do. We can't help those out, the outliers. We need to have, people usually get tickets all the time. Why can't they get tickets from the regular police officers from Harahan? I don't understand. Set up a speed trap, give out tickets. I do not want a camera to record what I'm doing when I'm going on the road. If you do, you need to go live somewhere else. Thank you.
We will now close, address the council, and I've just got to figure out how to turn off the timer again. Approval of the minutes?
Reading of the minutes of the special meeting on November third.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by, by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
An approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November third.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by, Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on November tenth.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by, Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November tenth.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes. Communications?
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in November, and the Planning and Zoning Board did not meet in December.
Resolutions?
The following resolution was offered unanimously by the council of the city of Harahan. Proposed Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash seventeen, "A Resolution Accepting Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC as the City of Harahan's auditing firm for the years ending December thirty-first, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty." Now, therefore be it resolved by the Harahan City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that the Harahan City Council does hereby take cognizance of the mayor's, of the recommendation of Mayor Tina Maselli that the firm of Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC be the City of Harahan's auditing firm for the years ending December thirty-first, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
Any council discussion?
I got a little discussion. Honest, I'm not a fan of this, because it goes over into another administration. I don't know why we did that, why we, we're only, we're only here for another two years. So, why do we have this going four years? I have, I have issue with that, so I'm probably not going to be voting for it.
We can amend the, we have to have a, an auditor. We can amend the contract. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, and as far as the contract goes, I mean, I could be the only one that didn't see it, but did you send us a copy of the contract? Do we, I have not seen it.
I can, I'm happy to send it to you.
Okay, well, if it's going up for vote right now, I'm not voting for it, because I haven't seen any of this stuff.
Ms. Lulu, can you speak to the importance of the, we have to have an auditor in place?
Mayor, I don't think anybody's disagreeing that we don't have to have one, but why does it need to be done by resolution? You have the authority to enter into contracts. We didn't do this before.
Actually, the audit is one very, do you want to speak to that in particular?
If that's the council's position, that the mayor has the authority to enter into the contract, well, mayor, why don't you just,
Take the authority.
That's not my position. That's why I have ordinance in place that she has to come to us for contract approval.
Probably the right legal analysis. Maybe it was just.
But we're voting on something that we have never seen.
Right.
Does it have to be done at this meeting?
Yes.
Are we out of an auditor?
Yes.
Why don't we just do a floor amendment to make it a two-year contract, if they get a copy of it?
I haven't read the whole contract at all. I'm not going to vote on it tonight.
It's a standard contract. It says the same thing as postal weights did.
It was the standard contract, and it, this was on the agenda, Councilman Johnston. We cannot go without an auditor. We cannot go without an auditor. It is simply undoable, untenable, or we're going to have to have an emergency meeting probably tomorrow to handle it.
And the rates were decreased having a four-year contract.
The clerk informs me that this has never been done by resolution in the past.
That's what, that's what I was wondering.
So, if you don't want to vote on it tonight, mayor, tomorrow morning, just sign the contract.
Thank you, sir.
Well, she can't, we got an ordinance in place to not sign the contract. You have to have council approval for that.
Mayor signs the contracts.
I understand. I'm not saying you don't, you still sign it, you just have to come for us for approval.
That's not the way I understand the mayor's powers. The mayor's powers under.
Well, they have an ordinance in place. Nobody questioned it. Nobody asked anything of it. So, that is law. By this city, it is law. Nobody questioned it. I talked to you about this many months ago. You said y'all were going to send it to the Attorney General, and nothing was ever done.
Which one was this?
The four ordinance I put up, one of them was to do, assign the contracts to come into the council for approval. And I have not heard anything. Nobody did anything, so that is how we handle it.
Well, I guess we'll have to just test that in court.
I guess so.
We'll test it. Thank you. So, should, on that note, I'm going to ask for advice. Should we withdraw the resolution?
Just withdraw the resolution.
Okay. Then the with, the resolution, resolution is withdrawn. Proposed Resolution, twenty sixteen eighteen.
All right, "The following resolution was offered by Councilman Johnston. Proposed Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash eighteen. "A Resolution respectfully requesting assistance from Jefferson Parish Councilman Paul Johnston, District Two, to vacuum and clean street drains in the city of Harahan, whereas the city of Harahan is a city within the parish of Jefferson, and whereas the city of Harahan does not have the necessary equipment to vacuum and clean street drains. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Harahan City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that the city of Harahan respectfully requests assistance from Jefferson Parish Councilman Paul Johnston, District Two, to vacuum and clean the drains on the following streets. It's Tyler Avenue, it's eight hundred through eight thirty-four Tyler Avenue, one oh one to one seventy-eight Normandy Avenue, five oh seven to eight thirty-eight Franklin Avenue, five hundred to eight thirty-seven Randolph Street, five sixteen to six fifty-one Posey Avenue, two twenty-five East Shannon Lane, two twenty-four to two ninety West Shannon Lane, Kendall Lane from Jefferson Highway to West Shannon, Gordon Avenue between Wilson and Ninth Street, Hickory Avenue between Jefferson Highway and the levee, one oh nine to one eighty-one Wood Lawn, fifty-seven to one eighty-six Park, five hundred to seven forty-nine Resort, five sixty-three to seven forty-one Ash Lawn, seventy-seven eighteen to five sixty-nine Kenmore, four sixteen to six forty Stratford, two twenty-six to three fifty-seven Wainwright, seven to one eighty-nine Colonial Club, two twenty-eight to eighty forty-five Halsey, number one to eighty-three oh two Berkeley and Jefferson Highway, five to one seventy-three Glenwood Avenue. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows."
Council discussion? Any discussion? Can I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve? I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by,
Second.
Councilman Wheeler, all in favor of the resolution?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Ordinance, resolution passes. Ordinances for approval?
"The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Hewitt and seconded by Councilman Wheeler. This is ordinance number eighteen twenty-one, which was vetoed. An ordinance as amended of the Harahan City Council, amending chapter fifty, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Harahan Municipal Code by adding Article Four, Electronic Enforcement, Speed Limit Enforcement, Sections fifty dash, yeah, through a hundred and fifty through a hundred and six, to provide for the enforcement of certain traffic signal violations by automated means and provide for civil penalties for traffic signal violations enforced by automated means."
Do I have a motion to open to public hearing? I have a motion by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes for open to public hearing. And Sue, if you could get your, your timer, just give us a moment. The sophistication. Thank you. Go on.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard Brown from Kenna, Louisiana. Mayor, before I start, I have a question. The agenda refers to this ordinance as being for the enforcement of traffic signal violations and to provide for civil penalties for traffic signal violations. That sounds like a red light camera ordinance, but this is a speed camera ordinance, correct? Is that just an error in the description?
That's an error in the description.
Okay.
The body of the ordinance doesn't speak.
Yeah, I thought I had read the ordinance and it reached correctly. Ladies and gentlemen, I've, I've been studying automated traffic cameras for about ten years, myself and Bill Treyi, who's in the audience, who's going to speak, and also Daniel Hayes, who is here and is going to speak. And I was one of the three people who met with then-Mayor Johnston and two of the council members nine years ago when this was being considered. Councilman Baudier was in that meeting, and the council soundly defeated the automated traffic cameras at that time. Mayor Johnston was firmly opposed to them after we had our meeting. Councilman Baudier was opposed to them, strongly opposed to them, as I recall. I do, I want to make a few points, and Bill Treyi is going to get into more specifics with speed cameras. He studied the speed camera issues probably more than I have. Most of my expertise is with red light cameras. But more cities, more cities are abandoning automated traffic cameras than they are adopting them. Every day I get a notice through email, or Facebook, or through websites. I subscribe to various cities that have voted to get rid of the traffic cameras. The public does not like them. They don't like them in Harahan. They don't like them in Louisiana. We don't like them in Jefferson Parish. They don't like them anywhere in the country. Whenever there has been a referendum where the public's had a chance to vote on them, almost without exception, they are soundly defeated. In Suffolk, Louisiana, which is the only city in Louisiana where they have actually gone to a vote of the people, traffic cameras were defeated by a vote of eighty-four percent to fourteen percent. The public doesn't like these cameras. They do not want them. I think somebody else may go into some of the issues with Red Flex, but I think you all know the former president of Red Flex USA is now serving time in federal prison for bribes. Jefferson Parish got rid of its traffic cameras through Red Flex in part because of public outcry.
Can I have a motion for another minute?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor. Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, and if you give me a moment, I'll get to the timer again. I'm getting better at Sue's phone. Councilman Benton's phone. There you go. Go ahead.
Jefferson Parish got rid of them in part because of public outcry, and I was part of some of the meetings with the parish officials, as was Bill Treyi. And part of the reason because it was discovered the Red Flex had been paying kickbacks or commissions, whatever you want to call it, to two politically connected people in Jefferson Parish who had been influential in getting the contract awarded. I'm going to touch this very quickly on some of the problems with the traffic cameras, you know. I agree with the speaker who said you need police officers enforcing your traffic laws, not cameras. As to whether they increase safety, the evidence is not clear on that. I submit it doesn't. Most of the independent studies show that the effect on safety is minimal, if at all. There are some studies that say they actually cause accidents. And I'll give you just one example, and this applies to both. Can I have about one more minute, Mayor?
Motion.
Do I have, I have a motion for one more minute by Councilman Baudier, seconded by,
Second.
Councilman Johnston, all in favor. Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes. Do you have one more minute?
And I can close on this point. When you're driving, if you know there are traffic, if you know there are red light cameras in use, what are you doing? You're staring at the red light. You're looking for cameras, you're looking for signs that say there's a camera ahead. You are not driving defensively. You're not watching traffic. You're not looking for pedestrians. Where there are speed cameras. Where there are speed cameras, you do the same thing, especially in a school zone. I submit they make school zones more dangerous. What are you doing in a school zone if you know there are traffic cameras? You're staring at your speedometer so you don't go 1 mile per hour over the limit. You're not looking for kids. You're staring at the speedometer. You don't need traffic cameras. We need police officers to take care of traffic problems. Thank you. How you doing? My name is Bill Treyi. I'm the one that Richard's been talking about. I'm a member of the Mayor's Military Advisory Committee in New Orleans. And one of the things that they asked me to do was try to find out why the military has to pay a 300% increase in automobile insurance rates when it comes to New Orleans, because we need the military here. I did this research as a volunteer when I was associated with Transportation Research Institute. I'll give you a copy of this. I gave that report to Cynthia Lee Shang. I also gave it to the FBI. I gave it to the Central Intelligence Agency. They took it seriously. They asked Redflex, after they saw that report, were they paying anybody that the rest of the council didn't know about? It took Redflex a number of months to answer. By the time they answered in the affirmative, they had already collected $19 million in fines, which you know they had to give back. Part of the research that I found out was Redflex Traffic Systems Chief Financial Officer Karen Finley, since then, has been convicted of public bribery. Its lobbyist, John Raphael, was also convicted of public bribery. The Executive Vice President of Redflex, Aaron Rosenberg, pled guilty to public bribery. Chicago Assistant Transportation Official John Bills pled guilty to public bribery dealing with Redflex. What I also found out is that Redflex Traffic Systems has a system in place that systematically falsifies crash data in response to how effective their cameras are. For example, for rear end collisions at intersections, they said there was a 77% reduction in rear end collisions. I went to Peter Allen, who was the head of Department of Transportation for Louisiana, and found out that before the cameras went in, there were 65, 66 rear end collisions, and afterwards there were 65. That does not sound like a 77% reduction in rear end collisions. What they do is they draw lines in the street, and they systematically eliminate all of the crashes that don't fall in between these lines so they can say that the cameras reduce crashes. Now, the other thing that I was trying to find out was what does the automobile insurance companies have to do with this? Because they all favor cameras. So I talked to the Department of Financial Services in the state of Florida, and they told me that most insurance companies, not all, but most insurance companies use tickets, including those generated by photo enforcement and the underwriting of a policy. So if there's cameras in your neighborhood, even if you get a ticket or not, you're gonna pay a higher insurance rate because of cameras. That's one of the reasons why we have such outrageous rates here in New Orleans. I also went to the Department of Insurance here in Louisiana. I have the letter from them also saying the same thing. Does it increase? Each insurance company has the ability to raise their rates. You have more time? Okay.
You want a motion for how much?
How much more time do you need?
I'll be quick. Just a couple of minutes, and I'll be done.
Can we motion for two minutes?
Two minutes, and I have a motion for two minutes extended time. I have it seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor? Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes. You have two more minutes.
I understand your frustration. Nobody likes people speeding in their neighborhoods. But you have to be objective. That particular road isn't made for a 20 mile per hour speed limit. You have a similar road, Central Avenue, between Jefferson Highway and the river. It has a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. That, I think, would be better, to have a reasonable speed limit instead of a speed limit that's the same as a school zone 24 hours a day. Also, I'm a member of the Deep South Institute of Transportation Engineers. I was the one that found the error in the yellow light formula that these camera companies have been exploiting for years. And I finally got them to admit that the formula is wrong, and they're trying to correct it now, because they're dragging their feet, because if they extend the yellow light just two or three seconds, there will be no tickets. That's the scam, you see. Raise your insurance rates and give all of these people ridiculous tickets. I have the proof of that that I can show you. But what I want to offer for you tonight is I'm a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I can get a traffic engineer to come out, look at that road, and give you some advice as to how you can slow down the traffic on that road without putting in cameras. And that way you'll have an alternate plan. There's all kind of ways of doing it. It could be a stop sign. It could be speed bumps. It could be like what they do in Jeff- in Kenner. The police chief in Kenner, he told me he just puts a police car out there with a policeman in it. And then those policemen leaves, and they put a dummy in the car. Well, when you're passing by, you don't know whether there's a policeman in the car or not. But people slow down, and then they move that police car, move it down the street. You never know when the policeman's gonna be in it. But when they go down the street and they see a police car, they wake up, and they won't speed. Thank you very much.
We will now close, address the council. Oh, we have one more. I'm sorry.
Still Jason Brusco of 7204 Stonely. Can you hear me now? I sound like the Verizon commercial. Okay. These aren't red light tickets to the experts, gentlemen, that just came up. I'm sorry. They are not red light tickets. These are not gonna be about red lights, cameras at all. These are speeding cameras. As far as raising the speed limit, I'm sorry, Central does not have joggers, and it doesn't have bicyclists on it very often. I've been down Central. No, it don't. Riverside on a Saturday, yes, it does, continuously. And kids do go across Riverside continuously to get up onto the levee. They go back. They go home. They play out there. I've seen kids kick a ball out there on Riverside Drive. 20 miles an hour is a good speed limit. I asked you before, though, what's your solution? If speed cameras are not it, and I will humbly disagree. Speed cameras have been proven in Great Britain. I pulled up the study last time. I gave you guys each a study last time that I was here. In Great Britain, they proved definitively that speed cameras work to slow drivers down. In fact, one of the reasons why municipalities are getting away from cameras is because there's no longer any money in it, because people are slowing down. They're actually working. So if they're not making money, then the municipalities are saying, "We're done with them." That's fine. I'm okay with that. Hey, if people are driving slow, my best day is if no tickets are issued. Not a one. My best day. So I'm asking you folks, and I said it before, please, what's your solution? I think cameras are the single most efficient method because it's 24/7. It works. It does slow drivers down, and it has been proven in both Great Britain and the United States. It does. And with those, that perfect trifecta, it seems like a no-brainer. But if that's not the solution, fine. What is? I'm asking you guys, and I'm begging you guys, to solve it. And real quickly, I don't remember. The young lady that came up there said, you know, "Keep your kids inside." My kids are in a van backing out with my wife driving. I'm not talking about kids running into the street, although they play out there. And I'm sorry, I don't care who you are. If you're so heartless that you don't care if a kid gets hit, who are you? Folks, this is real, and it's a known problem. You've known about it. Each and every person up there on that podium has said at some point you knew, you know that speeding's a problem. It's a real problem. In fact, it's one of the top problems in Harahan. Just a little bit longer.
Motion for two more minutes?
I have a motion for two more minutes by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor? Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
So I disagree with the idea that it's, cameras are useless. I completely disagree with that. But if it's, if that's not the solution, fine. What is? And I ask you to please answer me with what your solution is. I had sent you an email asking that question not too long ago, and I'm gonna ask you now. What's your solution? Mr. Baudier, what's your solution? Mayor, what's your solution? Ms. Benton, if nobody else here has a solution, what's yours? Ms. Wheeler, how about you? What's your solution? I want to know what a solution is because the status quo of, "Oh, the cops can do it. The cops can do it." No, they can't, because they can't be there 24/7. And that's exactly what I think we're entitled to as Harahan residents, is a 24/7 solution. I should not have to worry about getting hit when I pull out of my driveway. Thank you.
Tommy Buddy, Stonely Drive, Harahan.
If you just give me a moment, Mr. Buddy, please.
Oh, yes. Sure.
Okay, Mr. Buddy.
I feel like I've gotta say a whole bunch of things. We're addressing people that aren't from Harahan. Caught me by surprise. But first of all, kids run in the streets. This is a residential street. Residents. It's got 20-foot setback requirements. Can't build 20 feet from the front of that residential street. It's zoned that way. People built their houses that way. And kids run in the streets. I bought my house without a fence, and after an incident where I thought my son was hit by a car and killed, scared the hell out of me, I built a fence there. I bought it thinking I could appreciate the view. I gave that up 25 years ago. I didn't let my kids play in the back, cautioned them about climbing over a fence. Kids do stupid stuff. That's why you've got 20 mile an hour speed zones in all the residential areas of New Orleans, I mean of Harahan. That's what that lower speed limit's for. I'm a little perturbed that people from out of Harahan are coming here to tell me how to protect my kids and my grandchildren. Well, Redflex, who gives a crap about, sorry, who gives a darn about Redflex? Nobody's tied into Redflex, and I'm insulted when citizens go on blogs and say that this council and this administration could not issue a contract that would not allow for graft. Are you folks incompetent? Are you crooks? Absolutely not. If we wanted to issue a contract that prohibited any commissions, which you could say are kickbacks or grafts, it could be done in a heartbeat. I could draft it in two minutes, that clause, and I'm not a con- I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a contract expert. Two minutes, and I could give you the verbiage. So Redflex is just chafe. And the fact that they may have been crooked as all get out, so what? There are firms out there that don't do that. So anyway, we need a resolution. This is a residential street. There are children involved. There are adults. There are pets. And speed cameras work. They're labor-friendly. They would reduce, produce revenue. They're only gonna record a photograph of a person who happens to be speeding. The speed limit won't, nobody does this at 21 miles an hour. Nobody sets their cameras to issue tickets at 1 mile an hour over the speed limit. We're asking for cameras on Riverside Drive. 90% of the residences signed a petition specifically asking for speed cameras on Riverside. I don't want to impose this on anyone else. I'd like another minute, please.
Motion, two more minutes.
I have a motion for one more minute by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
About two months.
We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes, and if you just give me a moment.
Thank you. About two months ago, there were some residents that came with a petition asking for a stop sign in their residential neighborhood. It was, the motion was approved. I assume stop signs are. Those residents were requesting something to address a situation on their street. It could affect me negatively if I drive down that street and have to stop for a stop sign. I didn't oppose it. I supported it. Didn't cost me anything, unless I want to go break the law and run that stop sign. I supported it. Going back to the issue of we've got some residents who have sewage backing up in their houses. I could take the position that it's not backing up on my street, so heck with them. But no. I want to support the quality of life of all the people in Harahan. So I say do what's right for the citizens in that location and in that neighborhood. And we're asking for speed cameras. 90% of the houses on Riverside Drive signed a petition physically requesting speed cameras on Riverside. So I'd like you to just consider that and to do it. Any alternative, come up with another plan, and I'd still like to know why people from outside of the city are here.
Please, there'll be no talking from the, thank you. Mr. Chaddeling? Let me just reset this again. Okay. Thank, oops, wait. Go on.
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I spoke to council members up here. They told me the citizens do not want speed cameras. I said, "What'd you talk to, 300 people?" "Oh, no, not that many. There's 10,000 citizens in Harahan." So if you have 300 people who call you, telling you, "We don't want speed cameras," what about the other 97? I mean, I don't understand this. You put the ordinance in place. It allows the mayor to decide if she wants speed cameras or not. It's that simple. It's not like we vote on this. It goes. The mayor vetoed the first vote on speed cameras. Why? To show I have power to veto this ordinance. That didn't mean she had to put speed cameras. That's just to show I have the power to do this. Where people, citizens, who just make up stuff, and people run with it. Ms. Valenti's got on there. When Eric runs for mayor, he's gonna put speed cameras. Ms. Valenti needs to watch what she says. I'm not running for mayor. So she needs to decide what she says. Maybe she could run for mayor and not put speed cameras. I don't understand this. We waste our time. We come here, we preach, we praise to y'all. I'm willing to work with y'all for anything. I'm sure every one of them up there know this. You have residents who just beat up people and keep attacking people who don't know what they're talking about. If a resident has something to say about Eric Chaddeling, they need to come talk to Eric Chaddeling. If I have something to say about any one of these people up here, I'll call them. If I have something to say about any one of y'all, if I don't know you, I'll tap you on the shoulder and ask you, "Excuse me, can I talk to you?" This is a waste of time here. Waste of time.
Mike Bowler, 79 Glenwood in Harahan. I just had a question. How many fatalities have there been on River Road in the last five years? Any, chief? Any accidents with injury? So we really don't have any data on justification for this, other than somebody says people are speeding. Well, I've been a resident of Harahan most of my life. I grew up at 8 Dosher Drive, right across the street from Stonely, where they live, that are advocating for this. And I'm gonna tell you, when I drive down River Road now, it's for a leisure drive because it's slow. That's how I drive. I don't see half the cars on River Road that I saw in 1995. Not even half. So to say that they're speeding, I don't see it. And quite frankly, the best place to put the speed cameras is gonna be right when the speed changes. So you're gonna be a half mile, three quarters of a mile past where the speed cameras are. So it's not gonna have much effect if whatever camera company wants to install them needs to make money. I just don't see the purpose.
We will now close, address the council. Council discussion?
Well, you wanted explanation and solution. Just like I stated in the email that we've sent back and forth is I plan to try and give the police more money. You said, "Yeah, it's not gonna be a 24-hour type of situation." I understand that. But I feel personally that majority of citizens do not want it, and I'm going with the majority of the citizens. Now, as far as if something else can be put there, you know, it's been mentioned, y'all have mentioned maybe stop signs, maybe doing something like that. It's something to definitely look into. I'm not pushing everything away because I definitely want to help y'all out. It's just I don't feel it. I don't feel that that's going to be the best situation. So that's fine.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I'm going to uphold the mayor's veto, and I'm doing that because I think that traffic control is a police issue, plain and simple. And we need to do something to address the problem that the police are not out in force as they have been in past years.
Councilman Benton, can I ask you a question? When it comes up to budget concerns and we put into place more money into the chief's budget so we can actually put police officers there, will you stand by us or will you vote against us then?
The research shows that the chief is down one officer, and with the mayor giving him one additional officer, that brings him to where all past administrations had been in terms of numbers of officers. So will I give, will I vote yes to give him two new officers, no, I won't.
I'd like to explain the vote. This is a vote, and we will proceed with basically revoting on this ordinance. It takes a supermajority, which would be, in this case, city attorney, all four correct? That are present, correct?
The vote shall be taken by yays and nays and added for the minutes. If two-thirds of all the members, not the members present voting, if two-thirds of all the members vote to pass the ordinance, the presiding officer shall certify the fact there on over signature. That means four people have to.
Okay. Do I have a motion to proceed?
The question is, shall the ordinance pass the objection of the mayor, the mayor's objection thereto notwithstanding? That's the way the code puts it. So I want to read it out of the code. Shall the ordinance pass the objection of the mayor thereto notwithstanding?
So we'll have a motion to vote for the traffic speed camera ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, can I ask you for a five-minute recess?
Oh, sure.
And I can keep the motion on the floor.
Okay. We'll have a five-minute recess. The council meeting is now resumed. Any, oh, sorry, Carrie.
Sorry.
Sorry, Councilman Wheeler. The council meeting is now resumed. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance that's up for vote?
Yes, ma'am. After further review, we're, I am going to vote to uphold your veto with the circumstance that we will figure out how to put, how to give Chief Walker two more police officers. Whatever that may take, and however we got to do it to get there, it will happen. Because I'm putting my word on the line to these people that are having this problem back there, just like I've done to everybody else in the city, that something will be done to fix their problem. And we will have to crunch some numbers and do some things that are going to be a little tougher than we thought. But we will put two more police officers, and we will bust butt with this chief and work really hard to dedicate one of those police officers to traffic. I've been on River Road, I've seen it myself, I've seen a lot of people come past, I've actually called the mayor one morning, and I had a truck come around me so fast I couldn't even see a license plate or nothing. I've seen it myself. I called her. Mayor, did that phone call happen?
You did call.
Yes. So we're going to work hard, and we're going to give him two officers. Thank you.
Any further council discussion?
And chief, I will reiterate with Councilman Baudier, we will make sure, we will do whatever means we can to make sure you have two, maybe even more, to give you the adequate manpower that you need. Okay.
We will now proceed with the vote in favor of the traffic cameras. All in favor of the traffic cameras?
Will you vote not uphold the veto?
No, you vote for the ordinance again, correct? City attorney?
Shall, right here in the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass the objection of the mayor, mayor to notwithstanding? Do you want the ordinance to pass?
Right, you're voting for it.
You're voting for it again.
In favor. All in favor of the speed camera ordinance. Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Wheeler. All in favor to adopt the speed camera ordinance?
All opposed.
Oh, so everyone's opposed? Any, so no one's in favor. Any opposed?
Yeah.
Four. Okay, so I guess I was so surprised, I expected someone to vote for it. After all, the ordinance fails, the veto is upheld.
So are we coming back to resolutions? Because we have to. What are we going to do with that resolution?
All right.
Somebody has to.
Okay, I'll call for an opinion of the city attorney.
During the recess, I looked at the provisions of the Larson Act, this was with respect to resolution regarding the selection of the auditor. And LRS 33404 subsection A, subsection 3 states that the selection or removal of any person engaged by a municipality to conduct an examination, review, compilation, or audit of its books and accounts shall be subject to the approval by the board of aldermen of the municipality. This is under the provision that deals with the duties of the mayor. So the mayor gets to select somebody, and you get to approve as the board of aldermen. You don't have to approve the contract, just have to approve the individual selected to do the audit. That's what the law provides for. Now, it doesn't say how you do it. Doesn't say it has to be by resolution, doesn't have to say it has to be by motion. It's not going to be a law, it's simply going to be an approval, so I would suggest that a resolution is the appropriate manner in which to do it. I consulted with the clerk. The clerk says that the mayor withdrew the resolution. Now, to put something on the agenda that has been withdrawn, if it is not on the agenda to begin with, we all know that would require unanimous approval to put it back on.
If I cut you off real quick on that, for the mayor to withdraw it, it would need council approval to withdraw it off the agenda.
You know, on the safe side of it, I would say for it to go back on the agenda, it would be as if it had never been on the agenda, and you would have to vote to take an item up that was not on the agenda. Unanimous approval there too. You'd want to make sure that on the public records law, I mean the open meetings law, you'd be safe. Now, if the, if there's somebody on the council who wants to propose that the resolution be reintroduced and considered again, you need a motion, second, and a vote.
Do I have a motion to reintroduce and reconsider the resolution to accept the audit
Now, let me just preface with this comment. We all know that the budgetary control is within the power of the council. And you have budget votes coming up. So how the auditor gets paid is ultimately going to be the determination of the council. The selection, however, is a thing that is first reserved to the mayor, subject to your approval. So you can split that issue.
So do I have, do I have a motion to reconsider and bring it to the floor for consideration and a vote?
As I said, I'm not going to put it on because I'm not going to vote for it just as I stated. But if y'all put it on and want to defer, or if y'all just want to vote, that's on y'all. I'm not motioning then.
Do I?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to bring the resolution back to the floor for reconsideration. Do I have a second? The, I want to just clarify this before we proceed. I contacted Councilman Johnston in person, asked him twice if he would like to serve on the selection committee.
On the grading committee. I will cut you off right there.
On the, wait.
I declined to be on the grading committee. We are a council, we are not the grading material. We get the information after the fact and work on from there.
I'm just explaining the process.
And I'm explaining why I declined to be on the grading committee. We're the council. The information's supposed to come to us after it's already graded and for us to say.
So I then asked in an email for him to reach out to fellow councils since he's mayor pro town. There is nothing in the law that prohibits a council person to be on the selection committee. That is welcoming in the council into the process for transparency.
I did forward the email.
Then, as a representative, when people say that maybe the chief and I, our relationship has got its ups and downs, sure, like any relationship, when you're struggling in a deficit, the chief of police was on that selection committee. The committee was unanimous. Everyone selected the same firm. There was not one difference on the selection committee. What?
By a large margin.
And it was by a large margin on the numbers. This resolution was also put up on the agenda. At no point did I receive any communication from any person on this council requesting any information about what transpired. But here again, we're at a meeting, and all of a sudden, it's, where's the information? Where's the common track?
Once again, it's lack of information. When was the time difference between actually going through this grading and putting it on the agenda? Where was the time limit?
It was put on the agenda.
It was put on, we got the agenda, Monday?
It was supposed.
It was a couple days we had it. I'm talking about the in-between, from when you actually graded and you knew who you were going to pick, to when it was put on the agenda. How long is that?
I don't recall the date that we did that.
An email did go out to the council.
It did.
By Mr. Graus. He sent an email out saying that it was an equitable process, that we all had agreed to it, we, he said numbers, I believe, how far apart they were.
Yes, so that went out.
As I say, I'm not ready to vote on it. I mean, I don't think it should have been pulled off the agenda anyway, so.
So with that being said, bye.
We do have a December 31 deadline. The auditor has got to tell legislative auditor that they've accepted us and that we've accepted them, and then the legislative auditor has to approve and give us that, you know, marriage. If we don't do it today, we have to have an emergency meeting to do it before the 31st.
I'd like to call for a special meeting and be this considered notice for a council meeting to consider the, reconsider the resolution. Let me see what the calendar is. I would like to have this possibly Monday night.
19th.
The 19th, thank you, at 6:00 PM. So we will now have a special city council, Monday, December.
Excuse me, attorney of yours, since we just received the contract for Call Riggis and Ingram, can we also have another recess to review this? I mean, we literally just got it.
Wait, just, let's just finish calling for the meeting. The special meeting will be Monday, 6:00 PM, the 19th, at 6:00 PM, December 19th. Thank you. And just to reaffirm that this is not about accepting the contract, it is about accepting the firm and their qualifications. Councilman Wheeler has now asked for a five-minute recess.
Well, it would have.
Don't if, you got a special meeting?
Well, mayor, in all honesty, we literally just got this three minutes ago. In all fairness, there should be a recess to even let us review this.
If you would like a recess.
Well, but that's what I was trying to call for, you just called for the meeting.
Well, we can, I can also not call for the meeting if you want to call for the recess.
I mean, Sue, this is the first time we're getting at it. We're trying to put a budget in place, I don't even know what the auditor's even charging.
One at a time.
But if you're not voting on it, we have to have a special meeting.
But in lieu of Councilman Wheeler's, in lieu of Councilman Wheeler's suggestion, we will take a five-minute recess. Thank you.